Okay, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager, and in typical fashion, I will give a brief summary of a very brief agenda tonight. Tonight, the Board of Supervisors meets in workshop session. This is the second Tuesday of every month, and the one and only action item on the, well, actually, we have two action items on the agenda this evening, that being the approval of minutes, following which then I will provide a presentation on the, a presentation and a review on solid waste and recycling bids which we have received. Following that, the Board will hear any lasting announcements before finally taking a motion to adjourn the meeting. So with all that said, the members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. I would like everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Navarro will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us approval of minutes of the April 4th, 2023 business meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Prior to this meeting, the Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session and will do so following. Now is the time set aside for public comment. Public comment is for an item not on the agenda tonight. So if you are here to speak or ask questions about an item on the agenda, there will be a time for that when we get to that item. Would anybody like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda tonight? Would anybody like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will then move to the one item on the agenda tonight. Just by way of clarification, this is a workshop meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and it is our policy here that when we have major items to discuss, we bring them before the Board and the public at a workshop. We will take no action on this issue tonight. We do the workshop tonight to get information from township staff. We then allow a week for additional public comment, and then we would schedule action on the solid waste contract one week from tonight at a business meeting. So tonight is for informational purposes and to gather input, and a week from now we will take action. So having said that, before Mr. Gottschall makes his presentation, I would like to ask our solicitor, Mr. Stein, to explain the legalities of how the process works. Mr. Stein.
Number one, with regard to waste and recycling hauling, it is one of those contracts where they, it has to be bid by a competitive sealed bid, and then when the, after the bids are opened, and they can be, the, the, a bid of the lowest responsible bidder would be the one that the, that the township would adopt, because that's the requirement that's in the, that's in the statutory framework for contracting.
So it was bid, per law, we did have a public bid opening.
Correct.
We have the bids, and the Board has no choice but to accept the lowest responsible bidder.
That is correct.
However, there can be some decisions within that which we will discuss. So to give us a review of the proposed bid and the situation we are in, Mr. Gottschall, our Township Manager, has prepared a PowerPoint for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you very much. Members of the audience, thank you for attending. Just by way of a quick introduction before I lose the point, in the sea of, of attendees tonight, we do have a member of Penn Waste's team here, Mr. Joel Waschak?
Waschak.
Waschak, sorry. Just for the Board's edification, if the Board may have questions after my presentation, I'm sure he'd be happy to help explain. So yes, as mentioned by the Board and Mr. Solicitor here, I'm going to go through the process, and also then review the bids received as well. So here, a lot of information here for you, but, but I really tried to, in this slide, really compare the current contract. Today, we have, obviously, Waste Management, our hauler. This contract was executed back in 2018. It does end July 1st, 2023, and you can see there's some information relative to the current, current day contract pricing and, and that sort of detail. The new contracts, we took a different route this year, breaking them down into two separate contracts, and I will get into why that was the case, but, but we have before the Board this evening, and for discussion purposes, two separate contracts, one being for municipal solid waste, MSW, and leaf and bulk waste, and then also a separate contract for the recycling as well. Quickly, the request for bids, the timeline was as followed, in February of 20, February 13th of this year, we had put out onto the street a request for bids, that to all the haulers. We really took a very aggressive approach with regard to contacting haulers, reaching out to every single hauler that is licensed by the county, and that went out to many individuals throughout the, throughout the county and actually throughout the Commonwealth as well. There was an addenda issued both to the solid waste and recycling contracts, that was issued February 20th. A second addenda, which really housed a lot of clarification to various questions that we had received by the haulers, and just some internal tweaking to the bid documents, they were issued February 13th. We had a pre-submission conference with the haulers, any hauler that may be interested in our contracts, that was held on March 1st, and then following which, obviously, the final step of the, the process before this evening, was held on March 27th, and that's when the township opened publicly the, the bid, the bids that we had received, and, and read them aloud at that point. As Mr. Solicitor had already mentioned, Section 3102 of the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code does not provide the township a choice with regard to how we handle this process per that, per that section. We are to put this out to bid, and we are required by law to select from those bid the quote "lowest responsible bidder." Some noticeable departures from the current contract climate that we are in today with Waste Management, and again, we'll get into this as the presentation goes along, as I had mentioned, we separated this out into two separate contracts, municipal solid waste and recycling. We do have within, and again, I'll explain, two 96-gallon totes, both recycling and solid waste, and that is what provides for the quote "automated collection." Bulk item collection, under the new contract terminology, would still occur as it does today, every week per contract, but it must be pre-scheduled, and again, I'll explain that further on. And then we also added, for the first time, to our solid waste and recycling contracts, which we do not have today with Waste Management, are some penalty provisions, which will allow us to enact certain financial remediation to the contract if, say, for example, there are missed pickups, early starts, you know, trash left on the street by the hauler, and if those items are not mitigated by the hauler within certain number of hours. So that's new to the contract as well. So this was a very lengthy process, and, and the haulers can certainly attest to that, and so we have a number of items that, that really are kind of driving the cost in these bids that I will explain further on. A number of those items are things such as something we've all been experiencing, certainly in our own lives, some pandemic-era employment issues with regard to haulers being able to satisfactorily, you know, hire employees. This is a very difficult industry, you know, employees are out there 24/7 on the road in, in all kinds of climate, and certainly poses an issue for the haulers. For now, a number of years, there have been quite dramatic changes to the industry, such as particularly recycling changes, and how that international commodities market is, is, is being trickled down to literally local contracting. And then some feedback we had received from our current hauler Waste Management, I really sat down with them early on to get a sense really of, of how Lower Paxton may be different than the, you know, the industry around us and municipalities around us. A number of the items that they had provided to me with regard to things that may be increasing contracting price here in Lower Paxton are the fact that we currently today have what they call manual collection, and that is, you know, a system where each individual may have even bags out on the curb, and they have to have two or three workers on each truck, getting out of the truck at every stop and collecting those items. That is one of the most costly components of, of that particular industry. So we have that. Today, under Waste Management's contract, we have what they call the unlimited leaf waste collection, which, you know, that occurs and, and the hauler has to come by and collect all that, all that waste. Today, we have the at-will bulk item collection, which again is, is a weekly collection of any bulk item that you may have out on the curb, unscheduled, and so they have to have trucks available during that entire collection route to literally just come by and determine whether or not items may be out there, and, you know, they couldn't provide specific data on number of items per collection that, at that granular level, but, you know, they have to have that truck available to, to collect those items, and without there being some sort of pre-scheduling system, it becomes very, again, cost prohibitive from their standpoint. And then finally, the individual billing, and that is a system where obviously the hauler, you know, bills individually each customer within the, within the township, rather than in the bid specs you see today, and in many other municipalities, you know, the hauler just turns around and bills one customer, which is the municipality, and then the municipality turns around and, and bills individually the customers. So it's very costly to them, so they're really the, some of the feedback we had received from Waste Management relative to our current contract and the cost of it. Another consideration with regard to what may be driving the cost is Dolphin County's municipal solid waste flow control system. You know, as we all know, the Harrisburg incinerator, the history there, at some point along the history, you know, the county did step up and, and provide a system wherein, you know, all municipalities within the, within the county must take their municipal solid waste to that facility and only to that facility, along with the incinerator and its history, the cost of it. It is a very costly incinerator relative to those that may be surrounding Lower Paxton. For example, other flow-controlled systems, that is, again, those systems that require municipalities to take their trash to a county-controlled facility. In York and Lebanon, the cost of taking trash to tho, those flow-controlled facilities is $72 a ton. In Chester County, that price is $74 a ton. As you can see here on the PowerPoint, here in Dolphin County, that, that price is $93.79 a ton. So it's a, it's a costly endeavor for haulers to have to take the trash there. So that's something that factors into the, this price here in Lower Paxton and throughout the, throughout the county. Just for example, to continue further, to further the point, in counties that may not be non-flow-controlled, that is those counties, again, that you can kind of, it, it has a free-market system where haulers can take trash to whatever incinerator or landfill they like, in or out of the county. The price tends to be more in the mid to high $60 per ton, so we're talking vast amounts of money per ton, and we take a lot of tonnage to, to, to our facilities, so that adds up This is more, more information here for you, and I'll explain each one of these contracts. The, I don't know if anyone had a chance, we do have it up on our website, both documents, but both the municipal solid waste and recycling request for bids, bid documents are up on the website if you get bored tonight and you want to take a look through those lengthy documents. If not, I can save you a lot of headache and heartburn and just give you a quick summary here. But within specifically the solid waste contract, just kind of boils down really what, what gave the haulers a lot of heartache, and that is kind of this expanded bid specifications that we had put out. Really what we're looking to do here is provide to the Board a very lengthy list, a, an expanded grocery, a shopping list, if you will. You know, I want the haulers to give, give me a price on everything you, you offer, and that way then the Board can determine, you know, what makes most sense economically, after of, of course, as we heard, you know, taking into consideration the lowest responsible bid, but what are the prices of, of your, of your services? And so some of the things that we had asked for in those documents were, were as follows. Really, the base bid, that's kind of the, the bid of the, the service that, you know, at a base level, what, what would we, what would we get in the township? And that really included solid waste through an automated collection service, that's each customer receiving a bin, 96-gallon wheeled container, the township doing the billing, and a three-year contract. Then, we broke it out further and asked for options. So options 1 and 2A were manual bulk item and manual leaf collection. That is, again, the hauler having to go out with two or three people on each truck and, you know, get off their truck and collect bulk items, or get off their truck and collect the, the leaf waste, and that, those items being for a three-year term. Option 3A was an automated leaf waste system for a three-year contract term. Options 1, 2, and 3B provided for manual bulk item and manual leaf waste for a five-year term. Option 4 was a five-year regular collection term, again, that's automated township billing and trash only for a five-year term. Alternates 1A and 1B were a manual collection system on the trash. Both of those alternates corresponding with a three- and five-year term. Alternates 2A and 2B, which would provide pricing on the individual billing system, again, that's a hauler getting each one of you a bill for three and five-year terms. And then additional item 1, which is a vehicle fuel adjuster, this is something that's common in the industry, and that provides either for a, an increase or decrease in annual contracting price terms, based obviously on the rapidly changing fuel commodity market. In a lot of these contracts, we're talking very significant percentages of these contracts are as a result of vehicle fuel. These trucks take a lot of gas to, to ensure that they run, and so that fuel, vehicle fuel adjuster works both in favor of the township and the hauler from, you know, any given year, one way or the other. And then additional item number 2 was a dual contract discount. This was something that was new to our contract, I'm sure to the haulers as well, but given the fact that we had broken out the contracts into solid waste and recycling, one of the pieces of feedback I heard, had heard from the haulers was that there are some services kind of baked into these bids, such as overhead admin, you know, costs, you know, electricity to running their buildings, et cetera, that we may end up essentially being double billed for if we have two separate contracts. And so the way we had addressed this in the bid specs was to put in this dual contract discount, and that essentially means that we wanted a percentage from the haulers to say that if the Board were to award both separate contracts to one hauler, so example, the township awarding both recycling and solid waste to a Penn Waste, what would be the discount provided to Lower Paxton for getting both contracts? That's essentially to cover, if you will, those admin, overhead admin costs. So we asked for that as well. The recycling contract was much more straightforward, to an extent. We had obviously the base bid, which is the regular collection, again, that kind of corresponds with the trash side, that's a five-year, or a three-year contract with the automated collection service and township providing the billing. And then we had alternates 1 through 5, which again corresponded to trash, which would be items such as the automated collection for five years, the individual billing for three and five years, a manual collection for three and five years, and then the same two additional items, the vehicle fuel adjuster and the dual contract discount. Here's the best way that we can show in, in one slide, kind of a, a synopsis of what the bids came out to be, and this became particularly difficult when discussing items such as the vehicle fuel adjuster or the dual discount. This screenshot does not, you know, kind of show those items because it's impossible to do so, kind of baked in cost and, and things. And as you can see, some of the haulers here, we had Republic Services, Waste Management, and Penn Waste. Some haulers did not bid on certain items, so it becomes very difficult to kind of show just a very quick, down-and-dirty, apples-to-apples comparison, but, but this is the, the, the slide that attempts to do that. All these prices that you see on the screen here are based on 15,375 units. So essentially what we did was we'd asked the haulers to provide us monthly per-unit cost, and also a, an annual cost to providing the service, and again, that's based on that 15,000 units. That's how many essentially residential units we have here in Lower Paxton Township, that's how many homes these haulers would have to go to, essentially. And so you can see, just quick, we can go down this, Republic Service, Republic Services did not provide a three-year bid for the base bid. For the, for the five-year base bid contract, they had provided a cost of $48,737,520 over the five-year contract term. No bid for the three-year bulk item option. For the five-year bulk item, they provided a bid for $3,784,095. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go down to each one of these items, or, okay, you can see essentially what, what each one of the items cost per bidder. Really what you want to focus here on is, all the way to the right-hand side of the screen, is that green highlighted column, that represents Penn Waste bid, that is the quote "lowest responsible bidder." That, as you can see, going down the, the column, they had provided very competitive pricing on each one of the items. In fact, each one of the items, they were the lowest bidder on every single base bid and alternate or option bid. Also, what is of note on this slide is the fact that none of the haulers had provided a bid on the manual collection. So again, that's that service that we have today, where those haulers have to get out and manually get off their trucks and pick up the trash. This is really the service that is going away with, within the industry nationwide, and so again, you can see that we had, we had asked for pricing on those items, just to give the Board a, that good old shopping list, and, and none of the three haulers had provided a bid on that item. So it's very clear that, that's really something that does not work in Lower Paxton particularly with regard to our geography, our size, number of clients, et cetera, but they're the kind of, the two main highlights that I wanted to touch upon on that slide. Any question boards on, Board members on that particular?
Questions yet, Joe?
Not yet.
No, not yet, okay.
Next slide is the same thing, just on the recycling contract. Again, it's a little easier to read, but again, the same thing, we had three separate bidders on these, on this contract. As you can see, again, that highlighted column all the way to the right is from Penn Waste. Same thing on the recycling side, they had provided exceptionally competitive bidding on each one of the items, they were the lowest bidder, and, and that's pretty clear. And again, just to highlight, on this contract as well, none of the haulers had provided a bid on, on the, on the manual collection. So again, just to talk a little bit more about this, this concept or this statutory requirement of a lowest responsible bidder, again, I'll say it again, you know, Section 33102 of the PA Second Class Township Code, per that code, the township must obtain bids for purchases of any materials, services, or contracts that run in excess of $22,500, and as you can see on many of these slides, that is certainly the case in this situation. The Board must, you know, provide that, that award for a contract to the lowest responsible bidder. Penn Waste in this case is certainly that bidder, and again, the township cannot just unilaterally choose any hauler that we may or may not want, just because of a number of factors. We really have to rely on that, that legal framework of, of the lowest responsible bid. And then the following chart here on this slide represents what the per customer charge is before any sort of billing consideration, and I'll explain that in a further slide here. But again, keep an eye on that highlighted green row, these again would kind of be the charge per customer per quarter based on the bids that we had just reviewed, and you can see per year, and again, I'll just kind of denote the fact that this does not include any sort of billing consideration, any sort of vehicle fuel adjuster consideration from year to year, that would be impossible for us to show here, and also any And also any sort of consideration for the annual increase or decrease, if ever there may be one, to the, the, the Dolphin County incinerator facility. Those tipping fees are assessed by the facility and do get added to the, to the annual bill. But that is out of anyone's control here, here at the township or at the hauler level. So I mean, you can see what, what those costs are. In, in, just in 2023 alone, the per quarter, per customer charge as bid by Penn Waste comes in at one hundred, three dollars and fifty-two cents. Waste Management came in at one hundred, forty dollars and ninety-seven cents. And Republic Services came in at one hundred, thirty dollars and thirty-five cents. And again, this is, this is based upon the five-year contract model. That really kind of gives us an idea, apples-to-apples as best as we can. And that is the most competitive pricing based upon all of the options put together. Then just for the board's consideration, some other items to kind of keep in mind here as we discuss these contracts. That billing component, which I just explained on the, the most previous slide. The, those numbers, that one oh-three per quarter number is a consideration based upon the township performing the billing services and customer service functions in-house. Staff management is recommending to the board that there be some sort of additional consideration for billing purposes to help offset that, those functions for which currently there are no staff capacity to handle. We just, we, we don't do an extra fifteen thousand billing, you know, movements a, a quarter. And along with that, the, kind of the customer service and, you know, the, the, the individual homeowner kind of calling up and saying, hey, my, my trash was missed or, you know, hey, I would like to work out a payment plan or something like that. All those individual interactions take obviously a considerable staff capacity. And, and so we, we do recommend that the board levy some sort of additional administrative fee to help with that additional burden. Again, we, we, staff recommends that, that additional fee be a five-dollar per quarter charge per individual. And still in so doing would save the, the rate payer, the individual rate payer across the board about one point five million dollars a year. Penn Waste's individual billing option came in at about thirty dollars per quarter, per, per customer. So thirty dollars per quarter and, and we're asking the board to consider five dollars per quarter. So it's, it would be a massive savings across the, across the rate paying, rate paying base. Again, just one item I wanted to highlight, just so that's not lost. We are attempting through these bid specs to provide pricing based on a number of factors, but, but primarily also focusing on what services we may have today. I wanted to point that out that with regard to the bulk item collection service. And I mentioned this briefly, but given the fact that these new contracts are providing pricing based upon an automated collection system, that's again, just that one person per truck and the, you know, the automated arm coming out and, and handling the can. Something that has to factor into that as well is this bulk item service. Because obviously, you know, the automated arm can't come out and, and pick up a, a couch or, you know, a dining room table or something. So, so with this new contract, the bulk item collection system would require a pre-arranged, you know, pickup. So that's individual resident to hauler arrangement. And there would be a, a phone system set up for that. And, and I, I believe some sort of online system that we can set up through the hauler that, that a person can go on at their leisure and, and make that happen. But that would still be baked into your contract that you would have the option to provide or put out a, a bulk item once, once per, per week. But we're just going to require that, that pre-arranged scheduled pickup. And then lastly, consideration on the containers. I just note again that with, with these two contracts, each contract does spell out the fact that per the automated system, each individual unit, residential unit would receive two ninety-six gallon wheeled containers. That being one for the trash and one for a sixty-five gallon. And one for trash and one for recycling. There is language within the contract itself that does stipulate that a sixty-five gallon container shall be made available per unit to any individual resident upon the request of that individual who may not want the larger containers, who may not be able to manage the larger containers or may not produce enough trash to fill the containers. Kind of a no questions asked policy.
You say a container, can you swap out both?
You can swap out both, yes, yes, sir. And, but, but each, but each individual will be receiving two ninety-six gallon containers immediately upon execution of the, of the contracts. That's going to be an automatic system. And then, you know, after the fact, that, that residential unit can make arrangement with the hauler to provide the smaller container if, if so desired.
Brad, is it Mr. Washak? Washak, okay. So my question is, what if you already know that your garage is not going to be able to have two six, not have two ninety-six gallon containers? So you already know that you're going to use two sixty-five. Is there any way that they could get those without having to get the ninety-six and have to wait till you come and swap them out? Probably better if you go to the microphone.
Should we wait for the end to start asking him questions?
This is really the only, this is the last slide.
I just thought because he was on the containers.
So regarding your question regarding the sixty-five gallon carts, so.
Say your name again, please, sir.
My name is Joel Waschok with Penn Waste. With regard to the sixty-five gallon carts, so we're in April already. In order to get carts manufactured, I need to basically, once this is awarded, run to that cart manufacturer to get them to start making all of these carts. Just to have it in, the ninety-six gallon carts done in time for July one, for the contract to start. The sixty-five gallons, I have no actual data on how many residents would actually, would want that type of cart. So I can't put an order in right now for that. I would need to basically deliver the ninety-sixes to start, keep the, keep a record of it. And then at, at some, at some point, typically the cart manufacturers say two to three months, then get another order put in place for the sixty-five gallon carts.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is I've had a lot of calls from HOAs who, a lot of them have single-car garages. And the two ninety-six gallons are not going to fit in a single-car garage with their car. And now I, you're, I'm hearing two to three months, you know, till we could maybe even get the sixty-five. And most of the HOAs, and especially where I live, you're not allowed to put the containers outside. So that was my question, you know, why couldn't we order them right off, right off the bat?
Well, I mean, part of the problem, not problem, but part of the issue as well is these are township-owned containers. So I can't give you a, I have plenty of sixty-five Penn Waste carts available, but I don't have township, township branded containers that would be township-owned at the end of the contract available for, for use at the start of July one, basically.
Okay, I don't know what people are going to do because they, I guess they're going to have to put our cars outside.
Well, do you have, uh, do you have a?
It's okay if I ask.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, the, the homeowners associations are going to have to be patient for a couple of months is what the bottom line is going to have to be. This, this is going to be a major adjustment for our residents. It's going to be a major adjustment for the homeowners associations. And there's just going to be an adjustment period. And if it takes two or three months to get it all worked out, then they're going to need to be patient for two or three months.
And the question I had, and the HOAs, yes, I had my HOAs talking to me. They're going to have to change, change the rules and loosen up. But is there an industry within your experience? Do you know there's a certain percentage of people in most contracts that you know are going to want the smaller can? Is there an industry average?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could do some research, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
That, and you say you have, you have the sixty-five gallon? You have them, they're just not the ones that would permanently be used or? Can we try to think of a way to do this so that people aren't stuck with the giant cans longer than they have to be? And the only reason I bring it up is, and you were quite forthright, I understand what you're saying. I've got to order these cans and I just, I don't know ahead of time. Only reason I know so much about this is because five years ago when we did the last contract, this was a major concern. And so I was deeply immersed in this issue at the time. I was still on an HOA. And I know that my garage cannot fit two ninety-four gallons. So is there a way we can try to think this through, think outside the box? If we know that a certain percentage is simply going to take it, struggle with it for a few months and then request new ones? If we know ahead of time, just if, look into it. If there's a way that we can think outside the box and shorten that time period to, to save everybody a lot of trouble, including you.
But you're also dealing with fifteen thousand units.
Right, I understand.
Okay, actually, what I would like to do, we sort of jumped right into questions here. I just wanted to, to frame a couple of things before we get into comments and questions. And, you know, our policy is we will be here as long as is necessary to hear everybody. We do ask that everybody keep their comments to under five minutes. And we also ask that every person come up and not repeat what ten other people have said. Now, having said that, there may be only so much that can be said here. Hopefully the PowerPoint answered a lot of your questions. It may have confused you even more because there's a lot there. But I think from the outset, the, the situation is there are certain things that the board can decide and where we have options and there are other things where we don't. I think it's been made clear that we have to take the lower, lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So ultimately by law, we have to award the contract to Penn Waste. There's no discussion or debate about that, that's by law. We also had no contractor bid on having a manual rather than automated system. So that's off the table, we're going to have an automated system. We can discuss and debate the components of it, whether it's going to be your, your solid waste plus your recycling. We could delete recycling, but then state law requires that municipalities of our size recycle. So if we don't collect your recycling, then each person would have to take their recyclables to a central recycling center, which poses its own problems. Same thing with leaf waste, we could delete that. But then everybody would be taking their leaf waste to the township's leaf waste disposal system, which that creates issues. It's located in an area where that would put significant traffic in a residential area. So there are pluses and minuses there. And actually, the, the major decision that I think we can make that affords price is the billing option. Where if the township takes over billing, we can save every, every homeowner about twenty-five dollars a quarter by having us handle the billing. Yeah, we haven't worked through all the details, but I think we're envisioning that that might be a, a common bill with your, your quarterly sewage bill so that we're only sending out one bill for all services. But everything would be itemized on that bill. So I think that's one thing that we can do to cut back on costs. The board will have to discuss here tonight whether or not they want to do that. So that being the basis of what we can and cannot do. If you have questions or comments, please line up. Just please give us your name and your address very clearly for our minutes. Tim, haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Murphy, fifteen twenty-four Pine Hollow Road. First off, I'd like to applaud Mr. Gottschall and the staff for doing an exhaustive search to try to find the best possible outcome for the residents. It, it's just mind-boggling to read through all that stuff. And I, I did take the opportunity yesterday to look online and there's a lot there. I, I appreciate all the effort you went through. That being said, this is the start of baseball season and Yogi Bear's honor. I'll say this is like deja vu all over again. Two of the supervisors already mentioned that five years ago, we went through a similar thing. I will remind you of what I told you five years ago in West Hanover Township where they already went to the, to the ninety-six gallon totes. Exactly what Mrs. Lindsay said has come to be. The garages can't accommodate them. A personal friend of mine had to take the shelves out of her garage so that she could put her ninety-six gallon and sixty-five gallon totes in her garage and still park her car. But she has to back her car out of the garage to get the totes out on his waste collection night. Since that, that, that's been going on for over five years. Driving into that neighborhood now, I can tell you, the majority of the totes sit at the curbside. Seven days a week because people just can't handle them. It's just not, not a feasible thing in a townhouse type of situation. So that, that's something to, to think about that. I did want to go over a couple of things here that I, I made some notes as Mr. Gottschall was showing the, showing the PowerPoint. And I appreciate you doing that. How many haulers, Mr. Gottschall, did you contact prior to the bidding?
There were probably sure with, in excess of thirty. And again, that was every, every hauler that's licensed in the county, which includes companies like Hershey's Ice Cream actually, who has a hauling operation. And so many more haulers then actually would provide a bid, so.
So these are probably, only the three biggest ones that could even accommodate Lower Paxton's needs. But again, I appreciate your effort.
We, we did reach out to the city of Harrisburg, they have their own trash collection. They didn't bid, right?
And I think you already did provide some clarification on the, the two ninety-six gallon totes. Those would, those, one would be for trash and the other for recycling. And I think in other townships, they actually use a sixty-five gallon for recycling. So I'm wondering why we're. I used to be on a township recycling committee and I'd really like to see it's ninety-six gallons worth of recycling material every week. But why are we going to such a big bin or big tote for something like that?
Just initially, right?
You know, other townships have, have managed fine with sixty-five gallons for, for the, for the recycling totes. I just offered that as a suggestion.
Do we have a choice in that matter, Brad?
Other than the, the individuals making that determination, the pricing has already been provided based on the ninety-six, you know, township-wide, so we essentially have to.
We couldn't provide everybody with the smaller ones and then ask for the bigger one if they wanted it.
We, the, the hauler would essentially have to do a, a new bid because that determines, you know, how many trucks they have to send out and based on number of tonnage they collect. And there's a science-based formula to that.
I'm sure there is.
I don't pretend to be.
I think you're going to have a lot of people switching from ninety-six recyclable to sixty-five. I truly believe.
And I, I, I think that that'll be the case for trash as well, myself included. And a question to go along with that, would there be any rate adjustment for those of us who don't put so much trash out?
So the, the, the contract bid specs is written would not provide any sort of rate adjustment for that. We had provided to the haulers through the, the pre-submission We had provided to the haulers through the pre-submission conference, currently 600, there are 666. I gave them the number of 667, I thought would be more appropriate. But 667 individual residents within Lower Paxton, again, out of 15,000, are currently on the township's bag tag system. So that's, you know, we provided that to the haulers to say, you know, we, if we were betting people, you know, we would suspect that at least those people would, may want to take advantage of a lower, of a smaller container. So I mean, it's possible maybe that we could at least have those available immediately. But again, without doing some sort of survey ahead of time to determine who actually wants one, the 96 per unit, you know, delivery is the only way to do it across the board. But, but again, to answer your question, no, no sort of rate adjustment, sir.
So I guess there's no equivalent in the new system to the tags that are offered now?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry to hear that.
Again, sir, the equivalent would be seeking a smaller container essentially. If you don't feel that you need the larger container due to the trash you put out or recycling you put out, you can, you can ask for the lower amount, but that's, that's the best I can offer for you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. On the yard waste collection, is there a limit on what you can put out? I'm a little bit confused about that.
So in terms of, you know, in terms of the amount of stuff you can put out, no, there would be no limit. There would be, however, new regulations, if you will, per the contract, that, you know, the items must be bundled, things that are within any other leaf waste collection contract in, really in the Commonwealth, you know, they must be six inches in diameter, the bundles must be neat and tidy. Those, that type of language that wasn't in our current contract. So on leaf waste day currently with waste management, we get constant complaints from waste management, you know, indicating essentially that it's the Wild West, people put out as much debris in, you know, any format they want, and it takes the hauler an inordinate amount of time to collect that. So the new contract just simply tightens that up and requires that it be put out neat and orderly and in bundled diameter-specific packages. But, but other than that, no, no.
Okay. I think you're offering me a clarification here on something I didn't realize. You're saying the bundle has to be six inches in diameter?
No, no, no.
The, the sticks, yes, yes.
In other words, you can't put out a tree this size.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Would we still be able to use the craft, would we still be able to use the craft bags, the paper bags that we currently use?
The brown bags that they buy at Home Depot and Costco's.
Yes.
I think I read that in the bid documents yesterday. My understanding, reading the documents, was what Mr. Henry just explained, that the individual pieces can be six inches in diameter.
Right, right. But you can...
Okay. But a big change that I see is it's going to be, it's going to be reduced now from six-foot lengths to four-foot lengths in the bundles?
I'm pulling that up. I was deep in the weeds, but...
Imagine they're going to be out there with tape measures, making sure you're...
Not to say that I stretch the six foot, but four foot is going to be quite a change.
Township staff is certainly not going to be out inspecting each one of these bundles. But again, that was to put in place language that currently does not exist and to just provide some sort of real, real regulation on, on what is going on from, from week to week, which again, currently does not exist. And I mean, I get pictures from waste management all the time. I mean, people put out, good for, good for them. I mean, they're cleaning up their property and they're doing what they can per the contract. But, you know, they put out huge volumes of, of basically uninhibited leaf waste, yard waste, and it needed some cleanup. So, but yeah, to answer the question, no township staff is going to be out.
Hold on. Tim, can you sort of wrap, there's a very long line of impatient people behind you who keep putting their hands up wanting to talk. So if you could sort of wrap it up so we could get to them.
Okay, I'll just summarize a couple more questions. On the fuel, on the fuel adjustment, the fuel adjustment, does waste management have a fuel adjustment clause in their current contract?
Yes.
There is. So we should have, we should have seen that. I mean, that's an explanation for why our rates have gone up.
Yeah.
With that in mind, I guess I'm really shocked. I understand everybody's suffering from inflation, but just looking at that base price, $103 per quarter, not counting the billing, that's a 56% increase over the last waste management bill I paid. Inflation is not 56%.
Well, this is what has been happening. Other municipalities have had...
It's the labor, it's the labor part as well. Remember, we had this problem with waste management where they were missing people's yard waste pickups? And they were, they would have weeks where they couldn't put enough people out on the road. So we knew this has been a problem. We knew this day was coming. We knew they have to pay people a lot more because they literally can't get enough people to do it, like you know, is going on with the rest of the, the economy out there.
I remember the third-party trailer coming down the street picking up the yard waste. I understand what you're saying, but, and I understand.
But that's why, that's the excuse we're...
Inflation is reality. We all have to deal with it, but 56% just seems totally incredible to me.
Well, it's actually less than what surrounding municipalities have experienced.
Middle Paxton's doubled. Middle Paxton Township, their price doubled in their new contract.
On the, I think on the handout that was passed out tonight, their rate went up to $50 per quarter, or I'm sorry, $50 per month?
It's $600 a year, so that would be right, $50.
It'd be $150 a quarter, and ours is $100.
$103, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, your name and address, please.
Gail Rank, 4805 Lancer Street, right down the street. I have owned my house for 35 years and have been a resident of township for 40 years. And until two weeks ago, when a lady put a note out on Nextdoor app that this was even happening, we didn't know it. I was shocked to find out that we've never been notified, and unless I had put it out there, people might not be here tonight, and you would be making a decision for us.
No, that's not accurate.
It's not.
I did not know it. I've been here 30, I've, my sister sitting back here, she knew nothing.
We had...
I looked at you.
There were all the required legal advertisements for the bids. There were legal advertisements for when the bid opening was going to be occurring. What occurred was after the bids, bid opening occurred, some employees of waste management decided to go around the township telling people that the board of supervisors gave the contract to Penn Waste, which is not true. We've not given a contract to anybody at this point. But at every step of the way, there's been the appropriate legal advertising, and it was not meant to be a public issue until this meeting. And the reason we have these meetings is so that residents can get information and ask questions. And that's why we do it this week, and we let a week go by before we take a vote. That way, things don't get rushed.
So the only reason I know this meeting existed is I called the township and talked to Shelley Smith.
It's on the website.
It's on our website.
I looked on your website. I looked on your website. I looked on your newsletters. I saw nothing about this being there.
Well, it is on our website.
The agenda's on the website.
There are people here, there are people here that do not have access to the website. What happened to the newsletter?
We ceased having a printed newsletter back during COVID, largely because we couldn't get it done during COVID, and the cost of printing and postage was prohibited. And now this township has multiple platforms to let people know what's going on, including email, text message notification, phone message notification, website, all sorts of things. All you have to do is sign up for them.
But what happens if you don't have access to that?
Well, you know...
It's the people that are older and they do not have access to that.
Well, that's how communications happens. And, you know, and again, if we were to do a printed newsletter and send it out and raise your taxes to pay for it, then there would be a complaint about that.
Well, I have a question. I can tell this gentleman right here, I want a 65 gallon tank. I want 4805 Lancer Street. I don't have room. I live in a townhouse. I do not have room for a 96 gallon tank.
Well, you will have the opportunity to get the smaller one, yes.
I don't want to wait three months to get that.
Well, again, there are many...
I have, I have neighbors that are in their 80s that they will not be able to use a 96 gallon container.
Well, there are many components of this that are completely out of our control and are just simply things that are going to happen, including the fact that we have no choices to whom we award the contract to. I mean, our hands are tied. I told you what decision points are available to us.
When did the township become a monopoly?
It is not a monopoly.
Certainly it's a monopoly. If we don't have, we don't use that gentleman's service, we don't get the pickup, and you will not allow us to go find somebody to pick it up. That's a monopoly, sir.
Well...
Now tell me it's not a monopoly.
You want to call it that, that's fine.
What is it? Do I, if I don't, if I decide I don't want him to, that I don't want to pay that $103, how do I get my trash picked up?
Well, many municipalities allow individual homeowners to pick whatever hauler they wish. Then what you don't get is a lower fee because instead of one hauler having the efficiency of doing the whole municipality, you would pay more per quarter for your service if you had that option. And also then you would have various haulers running around the township with trucks every day of the week collecting trash, and that makes noise and disturbs people, so.
Well, being here at 6 o'clock in the morning is going to disturb me because I'm retired. I'll get out of bed at 8 o'clock, until 8 o'clock. So am I going to be able to get that changed?
We've always, we've always had, ma'am, we've always had 6:00 AM, always.
And people do not show up mine until 9:30, 10 o'clock at night.
Well, good for you, then you get to sleep in.
I know. And now I'm seeing 6 o'clock. I'm retired. I don't want to get up because these people are out here emptying my trash, and they're not quiet. And if you're going to tell me the mechanical is more, more quiet than the people picking them up, I don't think so. Now I have a truck in front of me.
Well, if you had, if you... If you had multiple waste haulers, then you'd have people waking you up three, four, or five days a week instead of one.
Then maybe I can afford it because, like I said, I'm retired, and this amount of money, it's going to do hurtin' on my budget and a lot of other people's budget. If they think this is, this is good, I just read, in fact, I just got a comment from the Facebook online on Nextdoor, the person told me, and I found this out, what we're saying here doesn't matter.
To a large degree, to a large degree, it doesn't matter what we say either.
Yeah. But there's a vocation, and I don't remember what, it told me that they get pickup once every two weeks from Penn Waste, and they pay less money than $103, one of those other people.
Well, again, it depends on when contracts are up. You know, if somebody signed, if a municipality signed a contract, a five-year contract three years ago, then maybe they'll have a lower rate for the next two years. But when that contract's up, the same thing's going to happen to them that's happening to us. And, you know, Mr. Gottschall has explained the components that are driving the cost.
And I was not surprised that there was going to be a cost increase for one reason, and that's fuel, because I know what fuel costs.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't surprised. I am surprised about a $40 increase in my, in my trash pickup for very limited, one bag, I have one bag of trash a week, and I'm going to pay $103 a quarter to get one bag of trash picked up a week.
Well, other things, other things beside trash go into, labor is, labor is the biggest driver.
But $103 for one bag of trash and recycling maybe once a month.
We tried, the reason we're doing this is to try to show you everything we're faced with so that if you were sitting here, you would say, all right, I would do something differently, but I can't see what major thing we could do differently legally.
Reduce the amount of money that people have to pay if they don't have as much trash. You were telling us to go to a 65 gallon container. How much less money are we going to pay?
No, no, I would...
That's what you just told us. You told us you're not going to have the tag system anymore. I have a relative that has a tag system.
Right.
They're going from paying for a tag to paying $103 a quarter now.
That's...
But nobody, if I'm right, Mr. Gottschall, nobody wanted to do any tags at all, all three of the bidders, am I right?
Right, yeah. I mean, again, essentially, you'd have to have a special truck to do that, and you'd have three people on one truck having to operate that piece of equipment to go around and collect those, those, those bags.
So people that are now paying minimal for trash are going to have to pay $103 a quarter.
But if, if, if no hauler will do it and no hauler will bid on it, there's nobody to do what you're proposing.
Yeah, but I, I just, to me, I don't understand why that couldn't be negotiated into a contract.
You know, you cannot negotiate.
If $65, if you're going to do a 65 gallon container, why am I still paying $103?
You cannot negotiate. It's a bid.
Well, it's a monopoly.
We legally cannot negotiate. We legally must accept the bid. We don't like it either. You know, we're going to be paying the $103 also.
Yeah.
And in my house, you know, like Tim, I have two people, you know.
Well, I have one.
That's a school tax argument. I don't have anybody in school. Why do I have to pay the school tax?
Well, now, there's another issue, but...
I own four cars. Why, why do I have to pay the same amount if I only own one car for, for road tax?
Okay. Can we move on to the next lady? Because we have, we have a number of people who would like to address the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Livy Harmon. I live at 1031 Pond Ridge Drive. Is there a reason you didn't go with five-year bid?
We did, ma'am.
We did.
So we sat...
It is five.
It is five.
Sorry, sorry.
It is five.
The other thing, do you know how many townhouses, general, pretty close, are in the township? Townhouses or condos?
I...
That you could just order that many because probably 99% of those people want 65.
Yeah, again, I mean, I...
Yeah, so if you got, if you ordered smaller ones for the condos in the township, at least that would help.
That's a good suggestion. I, again, the...
I don't know. I'm just thinking.
I appreciate that. Yeah, the best assessment, again, that we could have had to provide to the hauler was that, that bag tag number. And, and, and again, that's 667 people out of 15,000, so that was the best assessment we could have given to the hauler, so.
Yeah, because I would think the township knows how many condos or...
I personally don't, but, but we certainly have that data.
No, I don't mean...
Yeah, no, no. We have that data, yeah, we do.
But I'm sure that data is somewhere.
Certainly.
The other thing, I'm just curious, who fills a 96 gallon container once a week?
A lot of people. If you have, if you have a family of three or four or five people, you know...
I mean...
I know, I know a lot of people are using them and they're not even required to use them.
I'm just curious. That's, that was it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, Mary Lou Knowles, 1034 Oak Knoll. Couple things. Can't we just, can't you just add the municipal waste collection to the tax bill?
Not to the tax bill because that comes, the tax bill comes out once, well, twice a year.
Right.
What we're looking to do is add it to the sewage bill, which is paid quarterly. So you would have one bill, and it would have a list, sewage fee, stormwater fee, trash fee.
Do you mean, ma'am, why don't we just collect the trash?
Well, if you had, if you would put a dumpster out here, I'll be sure to just drive it over and dump it in. No problem.
That, that would, that would save us all a lot of money. I don't know how many people we could get to...
Well, if you're going to add it to the sewer bill that's based on usage, my trash isn't, I don't have that much...
It'll be a separate thing. We just mean on the...
Sewer bills are not based on usage.
I'm kidding.
No, no, you're right. It's not based, yes.
Okay. Another thing with bulk collections, why can't you just do that every other week like the leaf collection to save money?
With what?
Well, you'd be still putting out the same number of items. You just, I recall a time where, when we first moved here 30-some years ago, there was like a spring and fall collection. You couldn't put stuff out every week. You had two opportunities a year to put it out.
Right.
And that was it.
But then, then what was happening is people were leaving stuff sitting around their house at the curb, dumping it along roads, so that's why it went.
Yes, but that's different, okay? When you're only doing it twice a year. I'm talking about every other week. If you're doing leaves every other week, do the bulk every other week, and at least you'll save on transportation costs with that odd week out.
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Look at all, look at all the...
Would you like to answer that question?[1784.33]
I, I can say that, how often are you actually putting out a bulk item?
We've never put one out.
So it's really not going to, it, you know, just, it's not going to change that much. The, the reason why we're asking you to schedule it is that I can send a specific truck directly to your house. Get that bulk item. Just hit all of those specific houses that have requested for that week.
What happened to the microphones everywhere?
Okay, so if someone, if someone.
Can I ask you to, could you go to the microphone and explain it again? I don't know if we have.
Shelley. Shelley, do we have an extra microphone?
Yeah, if we can put a microphone, if you would like to just pull up a chair at one of these tables with a microphone. Because the, the folks listening at home can't hear you. You know, we're on live TV, so this is your, this is your debut, ma'am.
Shelley, Shelley.
Smile for the camera.
I forgot to wear my hat.
But you're also going to be a YouTube sensation as well, so just so you know. Uh, but we would like the folks at home to hear your explanation also, so if you could repeat it.
Sure. So regarding, uh, your question about, uh, bulk items, um, having it, most residents do not put a bulk item out every week. Uh, the reason why we're, we're asking for the scheduled collection of bulk item is to, um, allow us to be, to operate more efficiently within the township by sending a truck to the specific addresses that, that schedule the bulk item collection rather than driving the entire township and wasting fuel costs.
But what if you only have one resident with a bulk item on their curb in that section? So you make them wait till you get others in that area?
No, no, so you would just call in. Uh, we prefer at least a twenty-four hour advance notice.
Okay.
Just call in, give us a heads up, and then our dispatch team will efficiently make the route go through the entire township to, to make sure all the large items are collected.
But you'll still be going out of your way.
Well, it sounds like you're doing it like the Got Junk guys, right? Like, like, like I call and I schedule something and they come from Lancaster and they, they schedule it. They hit me plus three, four other people in the area all around the same time. That's what you're saying that you're doing. Yeah. So, so it's not like they're driving out of their way or anything. What he's asking is to schedule it kind of the same way that the Got Junk, if you would call them and say, hey, I want to get a pickup, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, and I just wanted to bring up one other point is that we do have a lot of senior citizens in our community and there is no way they're going to be able to drag those totes out to the curb in the winter. No way.
Well, this is a case of where we're going to need to get them the smaller totes. Uh, the initial delivery would be prior to July one, so before we hit winter, uh, I would assume that that point you can have delivered the smaller totes to everyone.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a very good point.
Take care.
How will that happen? Will each individual household call Penn Waste to order that tote? Or how will that, because you're going to have, um, you can't say do it on the internet because some people don't have internet.
Correct. Uh, we do have a phone, we have a customer service department available. We would have to compile a list, basically, of all the residents that want them. We would also need to, um, do some communication beforehand to state when this will be occurring, just to those residents that want to switch it out. Um, and make sure that your old, like the ninety-six gallon containers are curbside so that we can take them with us as well.
Yeah, we're going to have to have some communication ahead of time for the ordering too. We just can't assume that people are going to call and ask to order a sixty-five gallon. So there has to be either it through the township or.
Right.
Through the billing, um.
Yeah.
Because not everybody's going to know that they can do, you know, that they can get a sixty-five gallon and when is the cutoff to order.
I mean, we will, I think that's going to be a discussion that I'm going to have to have at the township.
We're both going to have to. Township, you guys, we're both going to have to. And what happens to the old people's current trash cans?
So since they would be township property as the way that is, is in the, the bid specifications, we would just hold on to them at Penn Waste for any swap outs that might need to happen. Carts break over time. They don't, they don't.
What did you mean?
I just mean, like, I mean, I mean their current trash cans. They just put them out?
Oh, those ones. Um, yeah, so I did kind of briefly speak with, with Brad about this. Um, we, we can take them. Um, if people don't want them, they would just need to label it as trash, like.
Bulk items.
Yeah, bulk items. Now, we, we would just need it labeled as trash, but we would want to kind of stagger it throughout the township, not all, because I can't send, i- if I can't pick up fifteen thousand homes of old trash cans.
Used trash cans, yeah.
I'm never going to get this township clean.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we'll figure out something.
We'll have to work through that.
This gentleman's been very patient, sir.
My name is Paul Woolard and I live at sixty-one oh eight Alleah Lane. And I'd just like to make a statement that, uh, Waste Management, I've lived here in this township thirty-two years. So I've been a constant customer of Waste Management. They have done an excellent job, come rain, snow, whatever they have been there. The staff has been great. I've seen garbage cans tilted on my street because of the wind. They have taken the time to pick it up. I can't say the same of your company where I have friends and relatives living near service territory. I witnessed a can being misaligned, dumped on the street, and your driver drove away. My son and I picked it up. It belonged to a neighbor. So we're going from an entity that has proven itself to be a reliable vendor to one that maybe? The other point I want to make is this.
Before you make that point, let me just make a statement. These are crews, the crews that are hired to do certain neighborhoods, just like, just like.
When someone calls and says the garbage has been thrown in the street, there is no response from the vendor whatsoever.
Waste Management provided enough feedback in the last eighteen months of over thousands of complaints to this, to this office, thousands.
Well.
I'm glad that you had such a good experience.
I have.
Not everybody did.
Can I just say, sir, because you get a chance to continue, but just to cut to the chase here, one, we, we asked them if they want to extend their contract with us. They said, no, we don't. And the other thing is, once we do the bids, we legally can't stack.
I understand that, but sir.
We did, we did ex, um, explore that option to extend with them. They said, no.
Okay. So basically cutting through all the rhetoric, it's a done deal at this point unless something really unusual happens, which I don't think will happen. The other thing is.
Legally, we're, we're showing you the cards here. We're saying legally, we're.
It's the dog and pony show. We understand.
It's not a dog and pony. I'm saying legally.
Let me speak. I pay for your purpose.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, the bottom line on the containers is this. It shouldn't be months from now when the decision is made what's available. It should be in the next couple of weeks because it's brought out. People can handle a ninety-six gallon container or a sixty-five. This board needs to assume the responsibility of having options for the size and it has to be before July. The other point that I want to make is this. Mr. Gotchel, if I understood you correctly, the new vendor will be able to take the trash and dump it into a landfill?
You did not understand that correctly, sir, no. Uh, so Da- Dauphin County, they must take trash to the Dauphin County facility. With regard to the recycling, that is their choice on where they take the recycling. So trash, no, it must go to Dauphin County.
So I live in a township that taxes me for rain runoff in the name of pollution and yet the vendor's going to be allowed to take the recyclables probably to a landfill because that's the cheapest.
Uh, sir.
Isn't that an oxymoron as far as controlling pollution?
No, no.
Could be an incorrect statement.
Sir, I, my company owns and operates a material recovery facility which sorts recyclables and then sends them to end markets to be recycled into new material. It would make zero sense for us to bring our material to a landfill or the incinerator that we are collecting.
Okay.
And sir, sir.
You're going to take it to a center that's going to recycle this stuff.
Correct.
And that's going to be in your contract.
As is.
Oil plate.
As is any hauler. Any hauler has to do that. They cannot bring it to a landfill.
And sir, Waste Management, if I'm right, um, they took it to the Penn Waste, um, recycling center. That's where Waste Management took it to the Penn Waste Recycling Center.
So the last point I'm going to make is this. I'm absolutely appalled that a company from Canada, the holding, your parent company, is a Canadian company, not even an American company.
We are Canadian and, we're Canadian and Texas.
Is in Canada. I'm done.
Well, again, it, 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 it is, for the purpose of this conversation, uh, of course, first of all, Penn Waste was started by an individual in, who lived in York County and started Penn Waste and grew it, so it is an American company. And, but again, the bottom line is, we were required to bid it. Only three companies responded to bids. There are certain things that none of them would do, therefore leaving us with no option. And at the end of the day, it doesn't matter if the company is based in Canada or the United States or wherever, we have to take the lowest responsible bid. You may not like it, we may not like it. We don't have a choice. Sir?
How you doing?
Pretty good. How are you?
My name is Lou Deal and my wife and I live at six two zero two Warren Avenue in Linglestown across from beautiful Coons Park. Uh, Mr. Gotchel, I've been reading lots of your stuff over the past couple nights. I suffer from insomnia. And, um.
And that didn't cure it?
I, um, I'm a person that is blind and or have low vision and uses different types of technologies to, um, read information. And I have a couple comments about that. I believe there's a stipulation in your parameters of bid that there's a certain section regarding whoever the, the hauler will be, their website is to be accessible. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Yes. Um, the gentleman from Penn Waste, um, you better have your IT people look into your website because I've checked that out already. Um, and the reason why I say that is I believe in the great literature of Mark Twain who once said, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance. And I want to be able to read changes that are made within my township, changes that are made within the contract to haul my waste away and whatever, whatever it might be. Um, we missed last week, we're going to schedule it this week. Our holiday schedule is this. I, I, it is crucial for people like me and others like me to have accessibility to that information. As a way of helping you, I would, I would point, point you to, sir, the, um, look, the Lower Paxton Township's website. If you go to there, down at the bottom, there's an accessibility link. And if you read about that, if you click on that, you'll read all the requirements it's made regarding accessible websites based on different technologies. Um, the township is a recipient of government funds, therefore it is covered by Section five oh eight of the, uh, Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. And Section five oh eight refers to the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three as amended. One stipulation I believe of that law is if the township receives one dollar of federal funds, all of its contractors must abide by the same access rules. I have, um, a couple questions regarding, um, what, the, the actual containers themselves. Um, my, my questions will be yes or no, I promise. In your, in your documentation, Mr. Gotchel, he talks about being able to purchase tags. If I were to get two of these ninety-seven gallon containers, do I need a tag for each one? Also, when I do my trash, I usually put a plastic bag in the can and tie it off. And for purposes of this new collection, I'm going to leave it tied off, but leave it in the container and take it down to the street. Is that suitable?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Oh, where is the rest of them? Oh, um. I was going through your bid tabulation sheet, uh, sheet, Mr. Uh, Gotchel, and, um, I come across bidder number one, which I believe is Penn Waste. They have a unit cost of twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, or seventy-seven cents. That is per house, per month. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, sir.
And then, so when you add that up, that comes out to about, I don't know, sixty-seven, sixty-eight dollars. But then you add in the lea- the leaf collection as well as the bulk item fee? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. That's, that's why the ba- bit tab is a bit confusing because then you also have to add in there, sir, the, uh, the, the ten percent discount rate as well. So, yes, sir, yes.
Yeah. I thought, I'm just making sure I was reading the same music notes that you are.
Correct, sir.
I, um. Are we able to follow up with you or somebody from your staff if we have questions over the next couple of days?
Certainly, we, we would certainly welcome that. And we're happy to see that you've, uh, to hear that you've read the bit, bit tab. That's quite impressive, sir.
Like I said.
And Brad, they only do have actually.
Is, uh, pretty prevalent sometimes. Um. The, um, the lawn waste, can it be in a container? Or must it be bundled according to your regulations? Or should I use a bag from?
We typically, uh, this is Joel from Penn Waste, uh, we typically prefer that it's in either the brown biodegradable bags or bundled or.
Okay.
Or bundled in, uh, whatever the dimensions are.
You're not Mrs. Deal with her rule, not mine. Um. I think that is all I have. I've always wanted to say this in a form such as this. I yield back the rest of my time.
Yeah, you're getting around a bit. I hadn't heard that one before. That's great. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is Neil Luke. Live at forty-three twelve Wimbledon Drive. My wife and I have been residents in the township for thirteen years. And I have to say, I appreciate the time. I serve the many voluntary boards and it's not easy and you don't have an easy problem facing with me tonight. Sad part is we're faced with a difficult situation and I'm not sure how the answer will, uh, pan out. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but we do live in a community, uh, just north of Colonial Road out where Linglestown and there's sex. We live in one of three developments, townhouse communities, and there are many of those in the township. Those of you who live in developments like this, we're faced with a, a difficult situation because we don't have room for, and I, I said this, you said this before, ninety-six or ninety-five gallon container. Uh, even the smaller one, we don't have room in the garage. We can't put them outside. Uh, driveways and with shrubbery, there just isn't any room available, so I don't know how this can be solved. Along with the problem of the deer and the bear that comes through every night. Uh, I can see real mess and, and problems. We've been very pleased with Waste Management Collection. Uh, in today's world, uh, most of us are seniors, we're faced with increased costs and it gets to a point where you are saying, really? You know, what, all this? And, and where, where does the buck stop? I mean, we are just faced financially with many difficulties. Waste Management came through for years, one truck, um, and one person. And they'd go up one side of the street, down the other side. So there weren't many, there weren't several, two, three individuals on the, uh, collection. We're going to end up paying more for less if it's going to be a mechanical process. I don't know what we're going to do with it. We have rules, regulations as to where we're restricted to put, we cannot have our trash cans outside in our development, nor do the people want to see it. Once a week, I travel from Camp Hill to back home and I go through Harrisburg and I see the trash out in front of the camp. I mean, it, it is just implorable. I would hope that our township doesn't eventually look like that. I believe I came through South Hanover Township today and I saw the big containers all over. It, it, it's just, it's just bad. So I don't know what the answer to the problem is, but hopefully you can work on something, but please. But please consider the difficulty for residents and many of us are in townhomes, are elderly. And I know in our community, a lot of single women, and just bringing out one of those large containers is going to be a major problem, especially in the wintertime. So I don't know what the answer is, but I hope you come to a good decision. But the cost today to our residents is just getting to a point where it's just getting too difficult. But we're in the situation, doesn't look like you have many good alternatives. I know these companies are making millions of dollars, big corporations, you all understand what that's about, yet the prices keep going up and we say, and the costs are rising and so forth. People are staying home and not working. But yet, we can't get people and you see the sign. I empathize with the board. I hope you come to a good decision, but please consider the difficulty of the problem for those people that are in townhouses and condominiums. So, thanks for your time and your service, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Guchal, you had a very good presentation tonight, it was very good. Thank you, board.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Alicia Figueroa. I live on 1411 Marine Drive. As of right now, we all know we have waste management, which is a blessing for me because I'm a single person. I work 16 hours a day, which means I barely have any trash, okay? I take my little bag, this small, hand it over to the guys because I'm usually waking up by the time they get to my property around 1:00. So I would like to ask you, those containers are too big, okay? I don't need 96, I don't need the following one. Do you guys have a smaller one for people that work 16 hours like me and barely have any trash because we live at work? I'm going to be paying the same amount of money as everyone. I don't have a problem with that because I work for a living. But I don't need that. What for? It's going to take waste and I'm not going to use it. So can you guys please consider, single people that have no children, no husband, no trash, and you live at work? Because I don't think it's fair.
Ma'am, I'll take that, it puts the hauler in a difficult position to have to answer that question. The hauler merely answered requests for bids that the township had put out. So, I mean, at this point, there is unfortunately no consideration with regard to your additional request. The only thing that we had provided in the bid specs is for the 96 and the 65. Beyond that, there would be no additional consideration, unfortunately. Really, I mean, to, the only way that we could provide that would be to throw all the bids out and start again and receive bids. We could have put options in here until, you know, we ran out of printer paper, you know, and it just becomes so voluminous to try to get these contracts written that we attempted to provide for the service that we currently have today, similar service that we have today, and provide some additional options for the board to consider. But beyond that, you know, we, again, we could, we could have had boundless options to consider.
So, am I allowed to say I don't want any trash bins in my property because I'm 16 hours working as a nurse elsewhere?
I mean, unfortunately, per township code, you are required to be part of the trash collection services provided by the township. And unfortunately, there are two options here, which are the 96 and the 65. No longer are there bag tags, so they are your new options at this point.
Okay. Okay, so I guess, like, answers my question. It is what it is. They got through.
Good evening. My name is Sam Reinhold, 7042 Candale Drive in the township. Been a resident for 20 years. I've lived in the state of Pennsylvania, three different counties. I've had homes in two other states. And I'd like to say that waste management's been the best service I've ever had. Never had a problem with them all this time. I lived in two different areas of the township. I would like you to just take a look at the terminology for the state, is it responsible, reliable bids? I have nothing against this gentleman personally, but I've been in other townships and witnessed areas where Penn Waste serves, a lot of trash out there, cans on the roadway. I've seen a lot of stuff on Facebook where people complaining, maybe that's something you ought to be looking at, is that terminology. Also, the fact that we're something out with waste management as far as the, everybody having to do the mechanical or whatever they have to do, the township does the billing, whatever, what might make it cheaper. I understand they didn't come to the board this time for a real offer, but it's just something I wish you would consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lois Booker, 4111 Lisa Drive. I have a question here. Will the recycling and waste be picked up the same day?
Yes, the, everything, both will be picked up on the same day, separate trucks.
Right, okay. Did waste management, when they made their bid, did they offer more than one large container for the waste? Or was it just the same as this company here, just one container?
So it was, yeah, I mean, it was one container for trash and one container for recycling, yes, and
Both of them did it.
Both haulers did provide both of those.
Because it's going to be a big change here. We're going from four bags or four containers to one. And I do fill, I will fill the 94-gallon container.
Sir, they're telling, sir, they're telling us that the 96-gallon will fill, the four bags that you were allowed to put out with waste management, they're saying the 96-gallon will hold those four bags.
Okay. We're going to test that out.
Not at my house.
At my house, we're going to test it out. And there are only two of us and we're still going to test it out.
It's going to be a change. And one other question and I'll be done. The leaf waste, and I apologize for this, I'm sure this went over, but the leaf waste, will there be a limited amount? And will, like, right now, we can put out 15 bags?
I don't believe there's any limit, as long as it's prepared properly.
Okay. All right, and
And sir, the township will continue to have its curbside, you know, leaf collection in the fall, like we've always had. That's a separate, that's a township-provided service.
But that's the one they pick up with the machine?
That's when they go around and they vacuum it all up from the curb. That will still occur.
Okay. Well, the only suggestion I have is that we go ahead and send out a newsletter of some sort that has really a lot of information about this, because this is going to be a whole change for all of us in the township.
I would think the most efficient way of getting out would be an insert in the sewer bills, because that goes to every household. And it's printed, in addition to the many other platforms, which, before we end, I'm going to ask Mr. Judd to review the various platforms we have and urge all of you to sign up for them. But the sewer bill seems to be the one printed piece that goes to everybody. So it would seem to me, I don't know where Jack is, that that might be the most effective way of doing things.
Thank you very much and I appreciate all the work you folks are doing.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Randy Bronstein. I live at 3837 Larrabee Drive. And just to, there's a lot of focus on the size of these containers, the 96 or the 65. What are the dimensions? You know, I mean, we're all focused on, you know, it sounded like they're monstrous containers. What are the dimensions in comparative to what we have now? I'm not asking for an answer at the moment, I'm just saying, maybe we should be looking at that as part of the condition that we're under, that's all.
Joel, do you know the
I don't know the dimensions of them off the top of my head, but
You know, it would, it would be helpful, Joel, next week, if you could bring or deliver one of each so that we have them here.
Yeah.
Oh, no, they're not that big.
Actually, I just pulled up, because the one gentleman was talking about your website. So I pulled it up and you have videos on there. And there's a woman, you know, wheeling one down. That's helpful to me. I would go, I would encourage you to go to their website.
The dimensions on there, Paul?
I don't see dimensions, but they have videos and, you know, videos of somebody and then, you know
You just want your wife to take the trash out.
That'll never happen. That'll never happen.
Yeah, well, good luck with that.
I have a 14-year-old, so he does that.
I can also have the dimensions next week as well.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Or would you be able to bring, if you could bring the recyclable, oh, did you? I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. Okay.
Yes, Michael Daly, 5893, Shoak Place. My question is with the yard waste, with waste management, I was just putting my sticks in a garbage can, the lid off, and they just pick it up, dump it in the truck. Is that going to be an acceptable method? I've used that for years, didn't have any issues. It was just easy.
I think they're going to have to be tied or bundled.
And that's a concern with other people. I've seen cans out and that's how they did it.
I'm sure that, we will work together on education, on proper yard waste preparation so that that will get out to the residents that they're aware of how to prepare for yard waste collection.
Okay, it was just a lot easier doing, I pick them up, put them in the can, I'm done. Now I got to go get sticks, tie everything up. Yeah. So that's a concern. And like I said, I could see the cans, I know others do, in the township when they're out. People do that. Same thing with the leaves, I'd put them in there and I was good to go. So that's going to be a major problem if that's not going to work.
Joel, I have a question. So, you know, if we choose, looks like we're choosing to do the billing. Okay, so if there's problems, like the recyclables haven't picked up, the yard waste, are they going to call, will they be directed to call the township or will they be directed to call Penn Waste? Who takes the problem?
I think that's something that we're going to have to work through.
Okay.
We have a customer service center, so it's not an issue, but I think that's something we're going to have to work through, just between Penn Waste and the township. Who wants to take, who, I mean, we don't have a problem taking the calls, but a lot of times what I've seen, especially in municipalities that they handle the billing themselves, residents just call the township immediately.
And then in return, then the township has to call you?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's just, it's just a, we can address that in the education as well to the residents.
Yes, sir.
Who to call.
My name is Greg Hare, 5902 Pine Hollow Court. And since Mr. Murphy took so much time in the beginning, he pointed something out, was it possible that maybe the township might, before these bid processes come out, have a public meeting ahead of time and maybe this container thing would have been addressed and you could have adjusted the bid to realize that we might not want 96s, maybe we need to go to 65s or 45s or 35s. Just, Mr. Murphy pointed that out to me and it made sense to me. Unrelated to the meeting, Mr. Henry, I became a caregiver to my brother and now, in that process, I became, with my aunt, I've been helping her out. And I just felt your comment about technology passing, she's 92 years old, she's still driving, she's doing wonderful. But there's things that she doesn't get information on anymore because she doesn't have a computer, she doesn't have a cell phone. So just try to be a little bit more compassionate when you make comments about those of us that are aging. And I think someday, your experience would have been different had you had elderly parents that you had to care for and they didn't have access to information. It's really, it's tough because we're in that transition year. And I'm sure through the 50s and the 60s and the 70s, as technology changes. But I would appreciate you taking the time, before you make a comment, well, that's just what they're going to have to do, is just to be a little bit more compassionate. And that's all I have to say.
Well, I have a 93-year-old mother who does not use any technology at all, so I am familiar with that. I'm also aware that most senior citizens, of which I guess I'm one, at this point, you know, I think that it is, while there's obviously older people and some people who are younger who do not use technology, senior citizens, I think it's an unfair stereotype, a lot of them do, because that's how they keep, you know, track of their kids and grandkids. And I know we have a photo frame that we email pictures to my mother and that sort of thing, but we, you know, we have all these different platforms and it becomes a matter of cost. And having a printed newsletter four times a year became inordinately expensive.
Yeah.
Which is why I suggested that we put information on this in with the sewer bills because that is one printed item that goes to everybody. So, point well taken, thank you. Yes?
Pat Reardon, Union Station, Phase 1. Question 96 versus 65. If we already have the 65s, blue and brown, the lid goes up, the bar in the front from the machine to take it, can we use those? Or do they have to be supplied by you guys? Especially for the interim time when you don't have the 65s available.
The only, the only hesitancy I have towards that, and it would just be because the township will own these carts that we're providing at the end of the contract. So if you're okay with, because like I said, carts get damaged over time. If you're okay with taking that risk and then we replace them with
Your 65, yeah. I'm talking about the interim, I don't know what I'm going to do with it once I get yours, but, okay. And just a comment, I forget who said about being able to fill up a 96, my son and his family, five fill up two of them, and they pay you twice. They pay double the amount. So, that's it, thank you.
Joel, I have another question about the containers. So we will own them at the end of the contract. Are they going to have Penn Waste on them?
No.
Or it'll just be a color?
It will have the township logo on them.
Oh, okay. And what color are they going to be?
The bid specifications call for the specs, the trash is green and the recycle is blue.
Is blue, and it'll have Lower Paxton Township on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Shouldn't it be the other way around?
The industry actually
Yeah, okay. I would think the recycle would be green and, you know, but, whatever. Yes, sir?
Hi, Dan Ultimos, 4090 Valley View Road. Mr. Guchal, your presentation was clear and concise. Good job, sir. I appreciate it. I apologize, folks, if my voice gets hoarser, my allergies have been getting the best of me, so I'll do the best I can and hopefully you can hear me. We have a trash problem in Lower Paxton Township, and we have a huge trash problem, in my opinion. God bless the gentleman over here that said he puts his trash in a bag and seals it and puts it down there. I think somebody else spoke about that. I mean, if you're not riding around in Lower Paxton Township and you don't see the litter and trash blowing on our streets, you have your blinders on and it's a sight for sore eyes, gentlemen and ma'am. I apologize. But, you know, to say that the homeowners associations are going to have to work with us and put the container and allow the containers on the street, that's a horrible idea, in my opinion, because somebody else talked about it, the bear and the deers and things knocking trash over. I mean, maybe Mr. Stein can answer the question for me, it's a yes or no answer, maybe somebody else can. Isn't there currently an ordinance where your trash needs to be in a bag and sealed, a sealed bag before it goes to the curb?
Or a can, with a lid. That's the way, that's the way, that's the way the spec was before we just put this new one out.
I mean, I'm not looking to create more work for the police officers, but I think we have a code enforcement officer, we have somebody. Trash is just blowing across our streets terribly. And, you know, I studied urban development, community development in college, and go research it. There's a group that did a lot of studies on that, proved I goat, in low-income housing residents. When they gave people their housing residence for free, the first breakdown they saw was the people who didn't pick up their trash. And then people quit caring about the community. It was the first breakdown in community because everybody stepped over to the trash and said it's not mine. Everybody wanted to look past the trash and say it wasn't my problem.
Do you know what, sir? I think part of the big problem is, because we will get some people standing where you are and telling us about how people don't put the lids on their recycling. And if you happen to live in a part of your block where all the wind goes, there are certain people who are always stuck cleaning up the whole neighborhood. So I think, because I see the litter too, and I, and I see a lot of recycling without lids, so
lids. So, as much as trouble as I'm going to have finding space for these containers, I think one of the benefits will be these things with lids, because that's been a real problem, is the recycling containers blowing over and trash all over the neighborhood.
I mean, I don't see trash, or recyclables as much as I see trash. And I will tell you, I walk my property line and pick up other people's trash, and I can fill garbage bag after garbage bag of other people's trash, because I'm not going to walk by and say, "I don't see the trash." I see the trash. But I certainly hope that we won't develop to put these containers on the street and let them sit on the street. You don't have to travel very far into the city to watch trash sitting on the street, and it's not a pretty sight. And it's a health problem, also, trash sitting on our streets. So, I understand that we have to accept this. You did a great job, Mr. Gotchall, you guys made it really clear. But we need to address our trash problem. We cannot allow, we can't say, "Well, we have to let these containers sit on the street." We can't allow them to blow over. There's something wrong. And again, I'll just stress, if you go into wealthy neighborhoods or communities, they don't have trash out. And I'll go back to, I'm glad there's other folks that said that you fill more than a 96-gallon trash container. What happens once a family has more than 96 gallons? Do they hope and pray the next week that it all fits in their 96-gallon container? What happens with that extra trash? I mean, where does it go? Because it continues to collect. I didn't hear that all night tonight. If I have more than that, what do I do with my extra trash?
Well, the containers hold four bags. We're allowed four bags now. I don't understand what you mean.
So, I have, I will never, I'm with these other folks, I will never do that. But there's been people come up here and say that they fill two 96-gallon trash containers or whatever. So if I only have, by this contract, I have one 96-gallon container, I'm using, I'm saying me, let's say any family, they have more than what fits in that. Where do they put their trash? Do they put it on the side of the street? Because now we're creating, I don't know, this is a question for you.
I mean, I can only speak within the contract, but what I would typically do is charge for double service for that. If they want to have two 96-gallon containers, there is a cost behind that container, that extra service. So, they would have to pay for a second trash container.
Okay, and let's say that they only have that one week or something. Again, that goes back to my question, do they hope and pray the next week that it fits in there, or if they go over the next week? Now, this becomes a rolling issue. And then how long does it take till they get a second container? And are people just disposing of their trash somewhere? It's a question.
We're willing to work with residents. If they have extra trash, we can, they can give us a call, and we can work with them through that. It's not that we're just saying, you know, "You're limited to your cart, that's it. Sorry."
I think with Waste Management, you're allowed four bags per week, and I think if you put out extra bags, then you got, you got charged.
You did. And they took it, they took it that week. I know that. And I'm pretty sure with Waste Management, not to the matters, I understand where you're going, but I used bulk service with Waste Management, and you used to have to call them and tell them what you had, because they want to know, "Do you have a refrigerator? Am I doing freon?" So, I'm not really sure that, that thing of Waste Management was just driving around. You had to tell them what you had, how many people that, you had to schedule a Waste Management, but I get that Waste Management's going, you were very clear with that, Mr. Gotchall, so I get that. But again, do you get my point, that the gentleman here couldn't answer our question, and I'm collecting trash again, that I foresee ending up on the curb or somewhere? It's trash that we don't have neat and tidy. Trash belongs in its place. That is, I guess, my main point that I want to make here tonight.
Can you get the answer to that question, Joel, for next week? If they have more than, you know, if there's more trash than their bin is holding, what, you know, do they put it out? Do they call you? How much do they get charged extra for it?
Yeah, I mean, I would, like I, I would say, just give us a call, and we can work out how much that would cost to handle.
But I guess, Joel-
Do you have another item? I think we-
Okay.
There's another gentleman waiting yet.
I get that, but my question to him would be with that, so maybe you come back next week answering that. You'll work with us, but if I have to have it, and I also get that it needs to be dumped. If I don't have a second container, where do I put that trash?
Same place you'd put it in now.
I don't know. Just a question, and I'm sure that you will come back with an answer for that.
Aren't they, aren't we limited to four bags now?
Yes.
Yes.
So, they're going to do with it whatever they're doing with it now? That's, I don't-
Well, they're putting it out, Chris, but they're being charged for those extra bags. So the question to Waste Management is, if they have an extra bag or two extra bags, how much is it going to cost? Do we, and you're saying, Joel, that we should call Waste Management? They would make arrangements to pick it up.
Penn Waste.
I mean, Penn Waste, I'm sorry. Call Penn Waste, and they would make arrangements to pick it up.
And as for what to do with that extra bag, we would recommend you set it next to your container. The driver would have to get out and put it in the container to dump it.
There you go.
Okay.
And question answered. Thank you, sir.
Now, can we move to the next gentleman?
I still have some questions, sir.
You're well past your five minutes, so if you could try to wrap it up.
Well, okay. I'll skip this question. I will add one last comment that other gentleman, other folks have said here. So, I don't go to your website a lot. I went to your Board of Supervisors website tonight to look this up. It says, "Meeting agenda will be posted prior to the meeting." Well, that doesn't tell me anything, so I get that, but I went directly to your site. If you're going to do that, then my suggestion would be you have, I found it eventually when I came back to your main site, there would be a hyperlink there that says, "Meeting Minutes" here. So, I am pretty savvy, but I read your webpage, and it left me saying, "I don't know where that agenda is."
My name is Richard Fraser. I live at 1072 Country Hill Drive in Hidden Lakes, out here off Union Deposit Road, and had some experience with this automated waste process, both in Delaware, York, and now it looks like we're going to have it in Harrisburg, too. And there are some things that go into that thing, it's like a learning curve, okay? Waste Management is very, very accommodating in putting a can in front of another can, and blah, 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 and they pick it up, and they put it in the truck, and away goes the trash, and everybody's happy, okay? Hasn't been the case in the automated systems. You have to have space between your containers, because the truck has to be able to grab that container to make it work. So people can't just put one behind the other, and they can't put it tight against one another, because my experience in York County is, the guys that did the trash didn't move the can out of the way for the recycling, and the recycling people wouldn't pick it up because there was no space between the cans, or vice versa. So, the township people really got to learn how to deal with these things, more so than just putting it in a can and putting it out in the driveway. You have to have the space. You have to have position for the truck to get to it and everything. So you're going to have a learning curve to go through. The other thing is that the various drivers have to make sure that they don't deposit a can in proximity to the other can, so that they don't impede the collection of the waste in itself. Other than that, though, and of course, the handling, I can't see a 96-year-old person go down around six townhouses and pull up a 96-gallon, that ain't going to happen. But anyway, they're going to figure out a way to get around it. So, that's the other thing, too. And I just want to make sure that we're understanding that there is a learning curve to this process, and it's going to take a little time to settle in, okay? And I think, too, I just want to say that using the billing system that you said, to put out some notices, I think that's good, because it goes to everybody, and they'll certainly pick it up and look at it, because they know it's an official piece of documentation from the township. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else, one more gentleman?
Pat Reardon, Union Station, Phase One. Right now, we can't use the white plastic bags that we collect our recyclables in in our 13-gallon trash can. We have to empty the recyclables into the can without the bag. My son just puts the white bag in, and so there's nothing loose there. If we're able to put it in the white bag, and that can goes over, those recyclables aren't going to go everywhere, like they did for me the first time. And I was chasing them in 25-degree weather. So my question is, can we just put the white trash bags, little 13-gallon white trash bags with recyclables, in the recyclable can? Or must they be loose?
We prefer it loose, and the reason why is because when it goes to our recycle facility, it needs to be loose so that we can actually separate that material.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Judd, if you would be so kind as to provide some information to everybody as to the different platforms we have in addition to the website, and how you can get additional information up to the minute.
Well, we have, we have all, we're on all the social media. We have a notification system that you can sign up for to receive notifications for various things, and of course, our website. And we did have regular email, e-news that you could sign up for, we want to get that. We have a new communications person, so we want to get that going, too.
And also, too, I would encourage you, the inserts that go into your quarterly sewage bill, every quarter, we do put significant information with the insert into your sewage bill. I know a lot of people open them up and throw away the insert and don't look at it, but that insert contains a lot of information, not only about significant things going on, but also information about our parks and rec programs and a lot of other things we do. Board members, do we have any additional questions or comments?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Does ADA requirements change the manner in which trash is collected?
We will work with those individuals to make sure that their trash is collected.
In other words, if somebody has an issue, they would let you know, and then you could provide enhanced service to get there.
Correct.
Okay. Now, as I mentioned at the outset, this was a workshop, it's an informational meeting. We are taking no action tonight. We are certainly going to take all of your comments into consideration as we refine things over the week ahead. One week from tonight, which would be the 18th of April at 7:00 PM, will be our next regularly scheduled business meeting. And among the items on the agenda will be the awarding of a solid waste contract. So that will occur one week from tonight. In the interim, if you have additional comments or questions, Brad, where can they email or call if they have additional questions or comments?
lhenry@lowerpaxton-
I'm going to remember that when race time comes around. We laugh, but certainly, you're always free to contact any member of this board at any time you have a question or comment, so that is true.
Certainly, you could send me an email, my email, if you could write it down, it's begotchall, G-O-T-S-H-A-L-L, at lowerpaxton-pa.gov. And so you can feel free to send an email to that, and we-
And if they don't have email, they can call?
Certainly, we can call the main number, and it will get routed appropriately, and we'll take care of you.
Okay, well, thank you all for sitting through a very lengthy meeting with a lot of detailed information. The board members, do we have any announcements before we wrap up?
Nope.
Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?